Good afternoon and welcome to the September 3, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. I'm Larissa McKelvey Day, the Chair of the Planning Commission. I will now call this meeting to order. Please stand and I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in our nation, where we are in the civil with liberty and justice for all.
For Zoom webinar participation, Zoom webinar is available for members of the public. The Zoom webinar ID and link are available on the posted agenda on the city website. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Rukamora?
Here.
Commissioner Ruck?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Meeks? Absent. Commissioner Purnell?
Present.
Chairperson McKelvey Day?
Here.
And we have Commissioner Montzalarios also absent.
We also have welcome from staff and introductions.
Myra Robles, administrative aide.
Tom Wiles, Senior Planner.
Lisa Brinton, Community Development Director.
Courtney Grossman, Planning Manager.
And Chris Callahan, City Attorney.
Welcome, everyone. For public comments are generally limited to two minutes per speaker. The Chair may further limit the time for public comments depending on the agenda schedule. Are there any comments from the public regarding items not on today's agenda? For Zoom participants, please raise your hand if you would like to make a public comment. Do we have any?
We have none.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to consent ID number 25-375, approval of minutes from the August 6, 2025 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Rukamora?
No questions or comments.
Commissioner Ruck?
No questions or comments.
Commissioner Montzalarios is not here, right? Okay. Commissioner Gutierrez?
No question or comment.
Commissioner Purnell?
No questions or comments.
Is there a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion that we approve and adopt the minutes from our last meeting. Sorry, I don't have the date in front of me. Thank you.
A second?
August 6, 2025. Thank you.
With a motion from Commissioner Ruck and a second from Commissioner Purnell, we will have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Rukamora?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruck?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Purnell?
Yes.
Chairperson McKelvey Day?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to public hearings, ID number 25-354, conditional use permit 2024-24, sorry, -024, appeal of the city planner's approval to establish and operate a 23,412-square-foot commercial recreation and entertainment use Dave &amp; Buster's with on-sale alcohol sales, type 47 ABC license located at 1104 Northridge Mall in the commercial retail CR zoning district. Because we haven't had an appeal in a while, we're just going to run through what the order will be and just so everybody knows what to expect and when everybody will have their turns. So first, Mr. Wiles will present, and then the commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Wiles and staff. And then we'll move on to the appellant team to include all speakers will provide their comments first and be limited to 15 minutes. Then the applicant team to include all speakers will provide their comments second and limited to 15 minutes. The appellate team to include all speakers will provide rebuttal comments and be limited to five minutes. The applicant team to include all speakers will provide rebuttal comments and be limited to five minutes. Public comment segment will open to the members of the public and be limited to two minutes per speaker. Zoom participants will be asked to use the raise hand feature and to provide public comment and be limited to two minutes per speaker. Now, Thomas Wiles, Senior Planner, will present this item.
Thank you very much, Chairperson McKelvey Day, Commissioners. The proposal is, let's see, the first one. It's the appeal of city planner's approval of conditional use permit 2024-024. The conditional use permit, the applicant is Dave &amp; Buster's. Ethan Conrad is property owner. It's for commercial recreation and entertainment use, located at the former Sears store at the Northridge Mall. The site is owned commercial retail and the surrounding uses are commercial, residential in the south, and US 101 to the west. Background, the Dave &amp; Buster's, proposed Dave &amp; Buster's consists of an arcade, restaurant, and on-sale alcohol sales. The hours of operation are shown on the screen, and all alcohol sales will cease by 2:00 a.m. The entrance will be on the first floor, and then the second floor will be the primary operation of the site. Concerning this conditional use permit, an NOI was sent, or notice of intent to approve was sent back on July 3, 2025. There was no protest received during the 10-day period. However, there was an appeal received on July 25. And then the reason for the appeals was that the documents were not available, that the approval was not supported by the record, and that the proposed California Environmental Quality Act exemption was improper. Subsequent correspondence was received from the applicant on August 21, 2025, and by the appellant on August 28, 2025. The Salinas Police Department does not object to the proposed conditional use permit as per memorandum dated July 3, 2025, which is part of the conditions, terms and conditions of approval for the draft conditional use permit approval document. And staff feels that the conditional use permit can be found exempt from the call from SEQA as per Section 15301. The criteria, basis of the criteria is that determination or interpretation is not in accord with the process, purposes of the zoning code, error of abuse, record includes inaccurate information, and decisions not supported by the record, and the planning commission should consider the appeal according to these criteria. The appeal, the planning commission is the appellate authority, has the authority under Zoning Code Section 3760, 11300, as stated here. And these are the authority that is provided to the planning commission concerning this, the appeal. Staff's recommendation for the proposed conditional use permit is a motion to approve resolution finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per Section 15301A and affirm the findings to deny the appeal of the city planner's approval of the conditional use permit. Are there any questions to staff at this time?
Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Rukamora?
No questions.
Commissioner Ruck?
I have no questions of staff. I do have questions of the applicant. Thank you.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
No questions.
Commissioner Purnell?
I do have a question. Myra, can you pull up that last slide, please? To like to wrap our brains around this, can you help define, so affirming a finding to deny the appeal, like what is the intention? I think I need like a summary. I think the wording is confusing me.
Well, it'd be to deny the request for the appeal would be to approve the project, to deny the appeal of the city planner's determination to see the appeal.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, and I have no questions. Let's see, we'll now open the public hearing on this item. Oh, sorry. Now I'm out of order. Guess the appellate would be coming up next? We're opening the public hearing, and we'll go to the appellate first. You're allowed 15 minutes total.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak. My name is Jason Jaffe, and I represent the ownership and the management of Northridge Mall. Sorry, is the mic picking me up all right? We're the property directly adjacent to, and we're functionally attached to the former Sears site where this conditional use permit for a Dave &amp; Buster's is being considered. And I want to make one thing clear at the outset, and that is that I'm not here as a casual neighbor, and I'm not here as someone just reading crime stats from afar. I didn't come here armed with attorneys. I'm just here as the operator of this property. I see what happens here. I deal with it in real time, and my company bears the consequences. So when I speak to you about safety here, it's not theory. This is lived experience. And I hope everyone here has come to the Northridge Mall, and hopefully you've shopped, you've eaten, you've brought your families. And as our guest, you experience a really safe, a really lively shopping center. And that's because we worked tirelessly to make that happen. So let me tell you what it's like to really run this property. On a daily basis, especially on nights and weekends, we face several public safety challenges. Some are minor, some are serious, but all of them require immediate response. And my team works extremely diligently and very decisively to address these issues quickly and effectively. And we've invested in a very highly-trained security force that patrols the property, coordinates with the police department, and removes problems before they escalate. Every time something happens, our team's on it. Because if we fail, the mall's reputation suffers, and retailers will lose confidence in the city. And we do this work quietly, without any headlines, because that's what it takes to keep Northridge Mall viable in a city that frankly faces significant challenges. And beyond the security issues of the city, it's been noted that this particular area of Salinas experiences crime at a much higher rate than anywhere else in the city. Now, the reason I'm here today is not just because of public safety generally, but because of the very property in question, the former Sears site. Even while vacant, the Sears property has already been a hotspot for incidents that my company, not Ethan Conrad Properties, not the property owner, has had to address simply to protect the mall's reputation. Last year alone, in the last several months alone, we've had teenagers physically fighting in the parking lot of Sears. We've found graffiti tied to gang activity on the exterior. We've seen it happening in real time. In that case, we worked with the police department, the suspects were arrested, and they were found on the site with loaded firearms, wearing ballistics vests. We actually had our ShotSpotter activation go off about the Sears site, where police then pursue the suspects, and again, these people were apprehended with loaded guns. These were not minor isolated disturbances. These were serious public safety threats. They were happening exactly where Dave &amp; Buster's is proposing to locate. And again, they were dealt with by my security team on property that's not even ours, because if we don't act, the public assumes the mall itself is unsafe. And that's just Sears-specific issues. Across the broader property, again, across property lines that are not even ours, in just the last few months, we've found kids drinking in the alleys. They were detected, confronted, and ejected from the property. We found an intoxicated man, drunk, passed out, and vomiting on himself in the movie theater. Again, my security team came into a property that's not ours. We worked with EMS to have him safely removed. We've had, we found a drunk man harassing female guests. Again, removed and permanently banned from the property. Multiple fights have been in the parking lots, including one where a man was armed with a baseball bat. And each of these required immediate response, coordination of police and EMS, and documentation. My team does this daily without fanfare, because that's what it takes to operate Northridge Mall successfully in Salinas. So I ask you then, what happens when we have a property here currently vacant? What then happens when we add a literal half-acre bar into the mix? Because Dave &amp; Buster's isn't just an arcade. It's primarily a very large bar with entertainment attached to it. It's designed to sell high-volume alcohol, shots, cocktails, beer, wine, whatever, in high volume late into the night. So what happens when hundreds of patrons, many of them drunk, leave that bar late at night? Well, I'll tell you, they're not going to just go in their cars and quietly go home. They're going to wander into the mall, they're going to cause disturbances at neighboring businesses like BJ's across the street, and they're going to drive drunk in our parking lots, and eventually, they're going to drive drunk on Salinas streets. And when those incidents occur, Dave &amp; Buster's isn't going to be there to absorb the cost. Dave &amp; Buster's is going to swipe their credit card, they're going to collect the cash, but they're not going to absorb the costs. The costs are going to fall on my property, they're going to fall on the neighboring properties, and they're going to fall on the community of Salinas. This isn't just speculation. And I sent in slides on this, I don't know where they are, but this isn't just speculation. I can show you examples. All you have to do is just search local news. You just type in Dave &amp; Buster's and the city that they operate in, and you will find story after story of fights, shootings, DUIs, and gang activity tied to their operations. Violence that includes shootings, violence that includes stabbings, domestic violence and assault, it follows this operator wherever they go. This isn't just a big-city Times Square thing. This is every city they operate in, from Houston on either side of the country. It's not an isolated incident. It's a pattern. And if you approve this CUP, we will see that same pattern repeated here on a site that has already proven to have dangerous activity even while vacant. The consequences of approving this CUP go far beyond late-night disturbances. They strike at the real heart, the economic heart of this community. Every day, me personally, as the Director of Leasing, every single day I go out to national retailers, and I try to convince them to open or expand Northridge Mall, and they all ask the same few questions. Is the market stable? Is the property safe? And will my employees feel secure working here? And if that answer becomes no, if the headlines about the fights, the DUIs, and the shootings linked to this property start appearing, those retailers will leave. And once tenants start pulling out, the momentum that we've built reverses. That is how malls die. I've personally seen it happen at our competitors' properties. That is how they die. And when a mall dies, the community loses jobs, it loses investment, loses its vibrancy, and frankly, and practically, it loses its tax revenue. Approving this CUP risks setting off that destabilization. And I want to also raise a legal point that's just as important as all the practical points that I've raised. The city has relied on a SEQA exemption to move this property forward, or project forward. Specifically, they've relied on the existing facilities exemption. And that exemption is meant for minor repairs or minor alterations to an existing use. Maybe you'd be replacing windows or repairing a roof, or you might even renovate a space for the same use for the same type of tenant. But that's not what we have here. Sears has been closed for years. There is no existing use to continue. Dave &amp; Buster's is not even a continuation of retail. It's the introduction of a totally different use, a half-acre bar. Courts have rejected this use, the use of this exemption, in many other similar situations. In communities for a better environment, for a South Coast air quality management district, the court made very clear that when a property is being repurposed for a fundamentally different use, especially one with new and more intense impacts, the existing facilities exemption cannot apply. So here, we're going from a department store with normal retail operating hours to a half-acre bar operating until 2:00 in the morning. That's fundamentally a different use. And fundamentally different impacts, traffic, noise, alcohol-related incidents, calls to the local PD, and community safety. The city is required under SEQA to analyze those impacts, and it has not done so here. Approving this CUP without that analysis is improper, and it exposes the city to challenge. So Commissioners, I want the property redeveloped. Trust me, I'm right next to the property. There's nothing more I want than this to no longer be a vacant box and to be a vibrant and productive use, for the benefit of my center too. But not like this. Not with a tenant whose business model is built around massive, massive volumes of alcohol consumption, whose problems frequently and historically have spilled into their neighboring communities, and whose costs will be borne by literally everyone but themselves. You have a responsibility today to protect not just the interests of a single tenant, but the long-term safety and economic health of the entire city of Salinas. And for all these reasons, I respectfully urge you to deny this CUP. Thank you.
Did we have the slides that he's referring to?
We do, Chair. They are actually on the dais, and it consists of, yeah, it's just on the dais about six pages. So you have, Commissioners should have that in front of them.
Okay, are there any comments from the appellate, or sorry, the applicant team regarding this item? You also have 15 minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Stephen Jamison. I'm an attorney with Solomon Saltzman &amp; Jamison, and I've had the opportunity to represent this applicant in many locations throughout the United States. I'm based here in California, but I have a vast wealth of knowledge with respect to this particular applicant. I can't say that about all my clients. Dave &amp; Buster's is not my only client. I represent many, many other people. But I do have this experience with Dave &amp; Buster's. And I have with me today, from Dallas, Texas, Mr. Les Leonard, who's a Senior VP with Dave &amp; Buster's. I have Mr. Jason Foshee, who's the Head of Security for Dave &amp; Buster's, also from Dallas, Texas. And I have Mr. Mike Ranian, who's a Regional Manager that will include this area for Dave &amp; Buster's, who's actually based in San Diego. I'm based in Los Angeles. We've all come here today because this is an important site for Dave &amp; Buster's. We feel that this particular location will not only serve your community well, but we think that it will be good for Dave &amp; Buster's as well. Dave &amp; Buster's looks very closely at each location that it chooses to put a store in. And so with all that being said, let me dispel any thought that this is a half-acre bar, that this is something that is even akin to having alcohol as its primary use. The primary use is entertainment, the primary use is the arcade aspect of it, the primary use is the banquet facility. When you look at the numbers for the, compared to the gross revenues that alcohol produces here, and it's an important aspect, there's no question it's important, but you're talking about 5% or 6%. It's not primarily a bar, it's 5% or 6%. Food and beverage is around 11%. So you're looking at 80% or 90% of uses that will provide entertainment to the community members here in Salinas. This location is next to this mall. The gentleman that was just speaking is talking about the effect or impact of the mall. On the one side, I heard, well, the location where Sears used to be years ago has been vacant for years, and there's activity that apparently takes place according to what he said. Wouldn't it be better? Isn't it always better to activate the area, to activate the location, to activate the spot, to make it a more vibrant area, to make it something where people want to come to and actually visit the location? That's what Dave &amp; Buster's provides. Prior to coming in here today, we made it a point to reach out to the appellate, because we found it very odd that the landowner for the mall next door would be the one that is appealing this approval. I would have expected it potentially from round one. It's got a fairly similar use. Dave &amp; Buster's will correct me on that, because they don't feel that it is similar. It's a symbiotic use. They both provide entertainment, they have some aspect of each other, but for instance, Dave &amp; Buster's does not have bowling. They don't have a bowling alley. And it is different. But we reached out to the appellate on several occasions, to their counsel, who actually wrote both of the documents that have been provided to you as the appeal, both after the first one and then during the time that we were getting prepared to come here today to talk to you. Why did we reach out? Because we did feel it was odd. We wanted to find out really what the concerns were. We wanted to find out if maybe they did not understand who Dave &amp; Buster's is and who Dave &amp; Buster's is not. They didn't return our calls. They didn't respond to our emails. And I would pose to you that I think that the appeal is actually in bad faith, because the facts that, or the issues and facts that they purport to provide to you are simply incorrect. The primary goal, the primary use of Dave &amp; Buster's is to provide this entertainment. There are over 230 locations. I indicated I've got pretty good knowledge of many of them in California and in other states where my law firm operates. I can tell you, they don't have these issues and this parade of horribles that you're talking about. Had they responded to us, we would have provided information to them and given them the availability to talk to Mr. Foshee, the Head of Security, or Mr. Leonard, who's here today, or Mr. Ranian, so that the true facts would actually be presented to you with the idea that perhaps they would feel better about it and would withdraw their appeal. Really, what's going on here is that there is some fear-mongering about things that are just simply not true, they're not true facts, and that is not something that's going to happen here. Now, how do you know this? I'm a paid advocate, okay? I'm a lawyer. I can argue on many sides of various issues, no question. I do have a particular affinity for this client, because I have represented them for so many years, and I know what they're like, and I know they're a good operator. But who else do you have? You have before you, as part of your packet, you have the observations of trained law enforcement, your Salinas Police Department, Sergeant Magana, who wrote not one, not two, not three, not four, but five separate memos analyzing crime rates and what can be expected from law enforcement's position on what Dave &amp; Buster's will do here and what it won't do. I would suggest that relying on your professional staff in that regard is certainly appropriate. They know what they're talking about, they know what calls for service do, they know what they could expect, and they certainly don't want to see any burden, inordinate burden on law enforcement. Sergeant Magana is here today, I'm sure that if you have any questions, he'll provide those answers. Who else do you have? You have your paid staff, your professional staff, in the form of your planning group. Your planning group is excellent. It's among the best I've seen in most of the cities that I've been in, and I do this in many cities, from San Diego to, all the way to Redding and some other locations, in San Francisco and Los Angeles. And you've got an excellent staff here, and I thank them for their efforts here and what they've done. They've provided you their observations in the form of a staff recommendation. They provided you the conclusion, which I agree with wholeheartedly, and case law and statute agrees with, that the SEQA exemption is absolutely appropriate. As a matter of fact, if it weren't accorded, that would provide a basis for legal action, not the other way around, not that which is being said by this appellate. It is clearly a SEQA exemption. The conditions that have been provided to you as part of your packet, all of which Dave &amp; Buster's has agreed upon, is the result of discussions between Dave &amp; Buster's and your planning staff to come up with things that will address, conditions that will address any concerns that planning staff has, that the police department has. If you remember, the police department memo that I'm sure that you've looked at identifies and reflects the concerns that they had, what they wanted to see. And so these conditions that were part of the Director's determination initially are acceptable, all of them are acceptable, to Dave &amp; Buster's. Security for a location like this is always important. And the conditions that have been agreed upon and that we're agreeing to submit to and that we would be very happy if you'd impose, it's not a problem, has to do with additional security on Friday and Saturday night during certain hours. A second security guard, security starting at 5:00 p.m. Dave &amp; Buster's knows how to run locations like this, and they know how to run it well. It's easy to cherry pick a news report from Times Square. If anybody here has been to Times Square in New York, you'll know and you'll remember that whatever was going on there, you've got to take with a grain of salt because of just the area that it's in. That's a pretty vibrant area. I've been there many times myself, and so the facts there are just not being presented to you fairly. The other locations that they cherry picked, Dave &amp; Buster's has over 230 locations. They've been around for many, many years. They are professionally run, they have professional staff, they're very community-oriented, they make sure to integrate themselves with the community, that being with whether it's PTA or softball or Little League or Pop Warner or whatever it might happen to be, depending on what the community requires and would like to see. That's what Dave &amp; Buster's is about. Dave &amp; Buster's has the ability to provide banquet space, so if you have a So if you have a birthday, a wedding, wedding reception, a quinceañera, any type of celebration, it provides another location for your community members to come in and celebrate in a safe and reliable atmosphere. When you walk in there, you'll know that you're in a Dave and Buster's. You'll know that you feel safe. You'll know that they care about the people that come in. Dave and Buster's also, depending on what we see in terms of who comes in and what time they come in, and because it's different in every community, is also a location where you're not going to see minors that are roaming around unattended. They're very cognizant of the fact that there need to be adults in the room, not just the people that work for Dave and Buster's, but people that these minors come in with. And they're very cognizant to watch that. There is one area of ingress here. In a Dave and Buster's, there is generally a reception and a desk area, so that when people come in, the Dave and Buster's staff lays eyes on them. They know who's coming in. They know where they go. They've got a robust surveillance system. They've got robust security. They do not cause trouble or problems in the parking lots around them or in, and would not be expected to do so, in the mall itself. As a matter of fact, this Dave and Buster's, like other Dave and Buster's of similar size, is expected to generate somewhere in the $11 million to $14 million gross revenue a year. So you're looking at sales tax that will increase. You're looking at jobs for the community. A location like this generally will require somewhere in the neighborhood of about, what, 150 employees? 150 employees that come from the community. These are jobs that will provide a place to go and a place for money to be made for people in the community. The hours are no different than the round one in their mall. The hours are consistent with everything else that's going on in that area. You've got a fitness center that's open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And what we all find, and I'm sure your law enforcement professionals, Sergeant Magana, whomever, and your professional staff can attest to it as well, when you have an area like this, where you've got these vast parking lots and these big buildings with the malls, if you have, one of the worst things that can happen, and I'm sure you've experienced it, is having a building or an area that's not activated, this end of the mall, if you will, that's empty. Of course, things are going to happen. You're not going to post a police officer in that area of the parking lot, and there's going to be things that happen. When do things not happen, and when does it get better? Is when you've got surveillance out there, when you've got the requirement per conditions that they're agreeing to, that say, we're going to be responsible for that area of the parking that we're responsible for, that has people coming in and leaving at that time. It's no longer dark and dank, and it's not going to be someplace where just nobody goes down there, and it's just empty. It's been that way for years. Dave and Buster's would like the opportunity to make sure that that is not the way it is going forward. I'm not sure what the neighboring mall would like to see, but whatever it is, it hasn't happened there in years and years. And we know also that malls everywhere in the United States suffer for use of retail. So what are they doing? They're trying to get entertainment in, restaurants, things that actually activate those malls. Denying this to Dave and Buster's will deny the ability for this mall to thrive. It's not going to cause this mall to falter or fail. Is there anybody in this room that would think that Dave and Buster's, with its over 230 locations and all of its experience for as long as it is, would invest the type of money that it takes to put in this location if it didn't feel that it could do a great job and provide a great service that make people want to come in and come in from surrounding areas, not just from the city? With all of that being said, I would like to just point out that we do have, and unfortunately, it's a minute 20 left, but we do have these gentlemen here, that if you have any questions, we can provide answers to you. I've got the sources that can do that, and that's why they're here. They care. I care, and we're here to respond to you. And thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Are there any rebuttal comments from the appellate team? You're limited to five minutes.
So we've heard a lot of claims just now, but I think what's more telling is what we haven't heard. I never heard a single comment about what the security plan is. I heard a little bit, we're going to have an extra security guard for two nights of the seven-day week. Where's that security guard going to be? Are they going to be at the front door? Are they patrolling the parking lot, where a majority of these situations seem to occur? I'd really appreciate if we can get the slides up, by the way, so you guys can see them as well. You know, the applicant here says that alcohol revenues are really just five or six percent. It's a small component of what they do. It's not a primary use. Well, then I have an easy question. Can we operate without a bar? Why don't we not have a liquor license? And then let's see how the COP works out. My guess is, they're not willing to operate without a liquor license, because liquor is a primary component about what they do. They can tell you it's only five or six percent, but it is a primary component about what they do. And look, I agree. Of course, activating a site is better than keeping it dark. But the activation should come from genuine retail, and it should come from uses that uplift the community, not uses that create risk and burden on the police. And you know, the applicant, they characterize my appeal as bad faith. They say that because I didn't reach out and contact them in some backroom channel in order to make a deal happen. Look, I don't do that. I'm here to do this out in the open, in front of the entire city, because I want the community to know that I care, we care, and we're here to make something happen. You know, so far, we heard them really only rebut what happened in Times Square. What about every other issue that happened? What about in Katy, Texas, where a man was shot and killed in front of his daughter in the parking lot of a Dave and Buster's? Where's that? Why don't we get an explanation for what happened there? What happened in Pittsburgh? What happened in Houston? There's a number of articles. And by the way, I just, that was like, five minutes of my time to find six articles. These go way back in time. You don't have to just go back one year. You can go back five. You can go back 10 years, and you'll find even more. So I would ask, if they know how to run it so well, if they have such a great operation, then why have violent incidents seem to follow them wherever they go? And again, I agree, we should be activating the space, but I would ask you, if the current property owner cares so much about the property, where has the surveillance been for the last couple of years? Why is my team had to step in and deal with violent incidents when the property owner themselves couldn't secure the building? We deserve a real plan. We deserve accountability. And to me, this feels like vague promises, selective responses.
Thank you. Are there any rebuttal comments from the applicant team? You have five minutes.
Stephen, I emailed them to you, if you have access to that. If not, we can bring you a hard copy.
Do you want me to share them?
I have a hard copy of what appears to be, two pages printed on both sides. If I just have a moment just to take a look. Thank you.
You can start over the time, five minutes.
All right, I'm ready. Thank you. Once again, Stephen Jamison, Solomon Saltzman and Jamison, on behalf of Dave and Buster's. I'm looking at what was proposed as a PowerPoint presentation, and as I indicated, there's two pages, and there's printed on both sides of it. Other than the first page, the rest of it is just complete fear mongering. There's no specifics, there's no facts. They're throwing it out there and saying, oh, well, we should delve into each one of these things and get into these weeds. I'm here to tell you that there is no basis for these allegations. If they were truly concerned about this, then that would have been brought up to us. It's not a matter of them reaching out to us. We reach out to them, say, what do you need from us so that we can respond to any concerns that you have? Nothing, complete dead, nothing. That's why I say it's just not in good faith. The statement that's made that says, high-volume liquor, we've already talked about that. It's not high-volume liquor. The issue about law enforcement and the impact or effect on law enforcement, why is law enforcement saying that it has no objection so long as these conditions are included, which we've agreed to? If law enforcement had a concern about potentially excessive calls for service or any other issue, then I would expect law enforcement to say that. They're not saying that to you. And they're not saying it to you because it's simply not going to occur. It's not reasonable to assume that that's going to be the case here. We don't want to be defensive. We want to be proactive. And being proactive is being here tonight, telling you who Dave and Buster's is and who Dave and Buster's is not. And all we'd really like is the opportunity to be able to show you with actions of what Dave and Buster's is capable of, and what the benefit will be, not only to the center, not only to that area of the community, but to the community of Salinas in general, and the opportunity that it provides for the community. We've seen it many, many, many times in many different locations and communities. We'd like the opportunity to do that here. And we thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners to either the appellant or the applicant? Commissioner Rockamora.
I have a question with the director. Does the landowner or the mall owner have any personal interest in round one?
No.
They don't?
Round one has a leasehold interest.
Can you counter the mic, please, so we can hear on Zoom as well?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. Round one has a leasehold interest in the space that they occupy in the mall. There's significant lease term left. There's no reason I would be here making a scene on their behalf. I have no personal interest. My company has no investment in round one. And frankly, they're not up for renewal for a long time, so that's not why I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you.
And this question is for Dave and Buster's. It's like, he was talking about security. I know it's a bar. I've been to both. You know, I've been to round one, and I've been to Dave and Buster's. I've eaten. It's totally different. It's not the same. More so round one's for the younger generation. Dave and Buster's is kind of like a Red Robin with arcades, to me, and that's just my opinion. I've been to the one in Hawaii. I've been to the one in Great Mall. It's both good. Since it's a bar, and I did see before, when I've been to both of them, you guys do have bouncers there around the bar, including security? Is that correct?
There is security, yes.
Security and bouncer is basically the same, around the bar area, you know, watching, you know, because the main concern, what we're talking about, like they're saying is, you know, the beer consumption, people getting, you know, out of hand. And it's based upon, I know it says, from 5:00 till 2:00, you guys have security? And what do you base, what do you base your security off of?
In terms of... So we're going to, sorry, Jason Foshee, security director, Dave and Buster's. So our security is based off, it's not technically bouncers, but it will be security, and they will be throughout various areas of the building, depending on the location.
Okay. And so basically, you guys, you know, because it's for, it's a family environment, but since you have a bar area, you know, you do strictly check, or do you guys give bans to the people? Or your bartender already knows, they have to be carded?
Yeah, I would say operations would speak to the carding piece and how, you know, they work operationally within the store. But yes, they do ID, yes. There'll be multiple ID probably at, like at the front, and then again, the bartender is required to do that as well.
If I may, I can tell you, one of the areas of specialty for my firm and myself has to do with ABC regulations and disciplinary actions. So with respect to Dave and Buster's, I know, and also if anybody else wants to provide any basis for that as well, but I know that they are very strict on their carding, they're very strict on who they bring in, they're very strict on making sure that they monitor who is being served drinks. Am I correct that they're limited in the number of drinks one person can get?
I can, yeah.
Come on up.
Hi there, I'm Mike Ranian, operations director for a good chunk of the West Coast. So to answer your question, you know, we, each transaction is handled individually, and each person is trained to kind of handle that. So we go through, obviously, the state of California, and we use a company called Serve Safe. So each team member that handles any process with alcohol, whether it's delivering it to a table, a server, or a bartender goes through this training, they're not allowed to serve on their own until that's completed. And I think the position you're talking about is a position we call captain. And it kind of, the perception is, they're kind of like a bouncer, but it's not really a bouncer. They're just kind of an extension of the management team, and you'll see them kind of walking around in black uniforms, I think is what you're referencing. So yes, that will be part of the opening plan for the store.
And if I may, just so it's clear, there are two types, at least two types of ABC licenses, and as I'm sure you're all aware, the state issues the ABC license. There are two types of ABC licenses for a location sort of of this nature. If it were primarily a bar, if that's what they were doing was being a bar, and they do have that section, and they've got TVs and all that, and I understand what you mean, but the type of ABC license that they will have is what's called a type 47. A type 47 is by definition a restaurant license. It is by definition a bona fide eating place license. If it were primarily a bar, it's a type 48 license, and then it doesn't have any food requirement. Under a type 47, it has to be primarily a restaurant that serves food, if that's what that is. Okay? And it allows minors in, because it allows families in, because it's a restaurant. I hope that helps. Oh, and also, I'm not sure if you're aware, but the state of California now requires what's called RBS training, which is responsible beverage service training, for anybody who's an on-sale licensee. An on-sale simply means Dave and Buster's, round one, all your restaurants, all of your hotels, it's responsible beverage service that are required to go through. And when a employee is hired, they have to go through the training and certify it, and keep records that they're certified. And then during the course of their tenure as an employee, they have to go through and be trained again. And that's in addition to all of the other training that Dave and Buster's provides to its servers, to make sure that they check, and they're not serving minors, they're not serving obviously intoxicated persons, they're not serving anybody who's being too rambunctious, and they're well-trained to watch for that.
So they're basically trained to cut people off when they're already at that one point? Like, my son's a bartender, that's why I ask these questions, because he cuts people off.
Absolutely. And they are also trained, I don't want to say more importantly, because perhaps it's not more, but they're also trained to watch for the signs of somebody getting to that point, so that they can stop it before it gets to that point. That's more difficult to do. Once somebody's exhibiting signs of obvious intoxication, absolutely they get cut off. But hopefully, we never get there.
My last question is basically for Salinas Police, you guys are here, the Salinas Police. If this was to go through, does a patrolling change for you guys in that area?
Hello, good afternoon. Sergeant Magana. What was your question is if...
Does your patrolling change? If this goes through, does your patrolling in that area change?
If Dave and Buster's goes through, will our patrol change? We will remain consistent with our staffing.
What I mean is basically going in through that area, just, because the main thing is, for police here in Salinas, it's basically being seen, you know, because that changes everything, you know?
Yes, absolutely. To answer your question, yes, it would change. We would be more active, patrolling, more visible, have the north officers drive by the location, be more visible during the operating hours, for sure.
Great. And basically, you know, like I say, for me, I'm born and raised here in Salinas, and I knew before Northridge was built. I've lived in North Salinas area, and I don't see that much violence, what you're talking about, because I live in North Salinas all my life. I thank Dave and Buster's for giving City of Salinas, and I thank Salinas staff for bringing a place like yours, you know, because I'm a firm believer of an anchor store, and I believe that's an anchor store that's going to bring more people to Salinas and also bring more jobs, which we need. Nothing against the director of Northridge, but to me, I feel that it's going to bring more business to Northridge. Because if I go to Northridge, I would like to go eat somewhere. There's a lot of places in Salinas we're building, but a lot of chicken places, but this is something different than...
Commissioners, are there additional questions for the applicant?
No, there isn't. I'm sorry.
We can refrain until comments.
Okay.
I appreciate it, but...
Okay.
Do you have any additional questions?
No, that should be out of my questions. Thank you.
Any questions for the appellant or applicant? Commissioner Rock?
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Chair. Dave and Buster's...
Dave and Buster's, what is the 25 rule?
The 25 rule, I'm assuming that what you're referring to is in the various stores, they generally have either a 21 or a 25 rule. Are you talking about when there's somebody who's minor and they've got to have somebody that's 25 or older to make sure they monitor it?
Yes, group of minors and they have to have somebody older than 25 years old with them. Have you thought about instituting that?
Absolutely. That is considered in all of the stores. What changes, what changes between the different stores is whether or not it's somebody who's 25 or more, or somebody who's 21 or more. The rule of 25 is commonly applied. When that's applied, like is it in the evening, during the day? It depends on when they're busy, when they expect to have minors in, things like that. But they do, they're the only, they're the only, as I think about it, they're the only ones that I know of that actually apply that. I've represented Chuck E. Cheese in the past. I don't remember them doing it. Others of a similar nature, I don't think they're doing it. I think it's Dave and Buster's. I'm not aware of any others.
Do you have a problem as a condition of approval for your 25 rule on Friday and Saturdays from 5:00 PM until 2:00 AM?
The diffi, I'll talk to my clients. The difficulty that I can tell you in implementing that is that if there's a need for it, depending on the number of people that are coming in, how it spreads out for the minors, there's just various factors that they're looking at, makes it difficult to have a condition that says you must at all times, in all circumstances, after 5:00 impose this 25 rule. That's the only concern I have. I could talk to them.
Because I am concerned about my city. I am concerned about violence. I think some of this is innuendo, to be honest with you, but I would like to put the appellant's concerns to rest. And the other condition I would like to see frankly is two officers from 5:00 PM until 2:30 on Friday and Saturday.
The difficulty we have with that, and we talked, and we actually talked about that with staff, we were looking at it, is when you're talking about card-certified carrying guards and a requirement that there be these guards, they're very, very expensive. And if there's no need for it during that time, which is what we expect during that time, shouldn't need a second one, having that condition means that if there's 12 people in the place, we still have to have a second one. So we like to have the latitude to be able to provide it. There may actually be more security than that which is required by condition here because they look at that actively.
Okay, the condition doesn't say a minimum of. So it says it will be X, it doesn't say a minimum. So that is why I bring that up as a condition, potentially as a condition. And so I think because this Dave and Buster's is going to bring people from other areas, all of the coast and probably Gilroy and Hollister in Salinas, and I think it's going to be a regional influx, which is, which is fine, but I'd also like to see security so that we can put the appellant's concerns to rest. The other thing that I have seen here in Salinas at an arcade is informal betting. Informal betting on games.
With money?
Yes. And I'd like to see that as a condition, that there will be no informal or formal betting on any kind of games, just because I have seen that. Okay? I don't know how you feel about that.
I think that as long as the condition is stated in a way that makes it clear that what we're talking about, because betting informal or formal in a place like this on various, it's illegal. So it's not going to happen. So I don't have a problem with recommending to my client, and obviously they make the decision, I'll talk to them, to say there's a condition that says you can't have betting, you can't have that, because that's what the state law is. That's what the state law is. So as long as we can have a condition that says we don't, that we're not, that Dave and Buster's would not allow any type of wagering that would violate state law or something like that, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Yeah, something pursuant to state law. That would be the wording, so that you're not boxed in on something else. It would be pursuant to state law. I just think a lot of employees do not know what state law is.
Well, that's, if I may, that's something that really they all should know. And when it becomes an issue, we make sure that they know because, you're right, a lot of people are, they talk about, they don't realize that, oh, that friendly bet can be a problem. It's a problem for a alcohol licensee. It's a problem for a business like this. It's a dangerous issue. And so a properly worded condition, I would recommend that we do that. I'll talk to my client.
And those are, you know, those are my concerns and those are my questions, and I would like you to consider adding conditions, maybe worded a little bit differently, but I would like you to consider it because I do, again, want the appellant to feel comfortable and I do want my city to be comfortable. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Any questions? Sorry. Any questions for the appellant or applicant? Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yeah, I have a question for the director of the mall. So one of your concerns or one of the things that you brought up was going from retail to, using the space from retail to entertainment. That's exactly what happened with round one. They went from JCPenney's to round one. Was there any negative effect on the mall itself when that happened or did that help them more?
It would be tough for me to answer that because we were not the owners of the mall when that component was developed. That was developed by Starwood Properties, previous star ownership. And when we acquired the property in 2022, round one was already in place. What I will tell you though is, from speaking directly with my security team and my general management team, yes, there are issues with individuals that stem from round one. I don't have the list, I don't have the matrix of which ones are from round one versus which ones are from, you know, Macy's. But yeah, I can say with certainty from reading the reports that there have been security issues that stem from the round one. Again, the round one that I personally, nor did my company, signed, we acquired a property that had a round one in place at the JCPenney box. But yes, this comes from experience and I've personally seen this coming from round one. And in previous roles, I'll also add, at other real estate developers, I've also seen this at round one or Dave and Buster, what have you, various arcade uses that serve alcohol ladies and I, this has been a consistent theme that I've seen across many different properties.
Okay, all right. And then for the applicant, so growing up in Salinas and being a lifelong resident of Salinas and like Officer, I mean, Commissioner Rockamora, I also grew up in the north side of Salinas and stuff. And I understand a little bit of how the culture here in our town because growing up here. I did read you guys, Dave and Buster's is a code of conduct. How often do you guys really apply that? Because it seems pretty, I mean, the thing about our community is, it seems like, you know, gang attire or hats and colors and all that is what kind of stirs all that stuff up. You know, you pair that with alcohol, then it just becomes a problem. But how strict are you guys on enforcing the code of conduct? So on your code of conduct and also it says right here, you guys are no hats or headgear, no excessive baggy clothing, are you guys pretty strict enforcing that? Or is that just kind of vague to kind of put people at ease, you know?
If I may just have a moment? In response to your question, there are two reasons for a code of conduct, and this is what I understand, I want to make sure I'm correct. There are two reasons for it. One is as a deterrent and the other is as something to actually implement and be able to rely on in order to eject somebody if necessary, okay? So you have as a deterrent saying, okay, or to be able to eject. And Dave and Buster's does rely on that code of conduct and does enforce it. But I want to make clear that there is some qualification to that. And the qualification to that is because there are a number of court cases that deal with whether or not, whether or not the way that something like that is enforced can violate somebody's rights. So for instance, if you're, I can't tell what you're wearing, but if you were with your friends and there were five people and you all had the same shirt on, okay, there's some discretion involved in that. One might say, well, that's, you know, they're part of a gang. Well, you're not part of a gang, but Dave and Buster's and any other entertainment purveyor has to be careful of that and they're trained to be careful of that. They're trained by people like me to say, you can't just do that and exclude somebody because they all come in with the same hat. Because if they're coming in and let's say they came from a bowling competition and they've all got the same shirt on, well, reality is, most of us know, well, they're a bowling team, it's not an issue. But if they come in with the same colors and there's something else that would indicate they're a member of a problem gang, kind of a thing, well, if you try and look at it independently and evenly, it's hard to tell the difference. And so that's why I'm saying it's, I want to qualify my answer by saying they have to be careful and exercise some discretion so that they're not violating people's rights.
I completely understand that, especially with the way the law works and all that. But I think you know what I'm talking about, what I'm referring to where, you know, not to stereotype any type, any person or anything, but we know what we're talking about, you know?
I can tell you, I can tell you that there is a particular location I'm aware of where there was something, there was an issue with people coming in, not around here, not anywhere close, where people would come in and they got into a habit of eating and then throwing a plate in the ground and saying, oh, that was terrible and we're not going to pay. And so what we did in that particular circumstance is, because it was, it became a pattern and obviously it was intentional on their part. And so we worked, we got together with law enforcement, we got together with the police department that was in that community, and we said, what do you want to see so that we can stop this? Because obviously we can't, we can't make money doing this, it's disruptive, and so what do we do? And so we worked with law enforcement to come up with some conditions on how we could identify who these people are and what the process would be to prevent that. And by working with law enforcement, we were able to immediately stop that kind of behavior. So they absolutely worked with the law enforcement to come up with a mutually acceptable way to deal with something like that.
And one last question here. One of the other big problems that we have in our city is with people congregating in the parking lot with cars and, you know, I mean, how are you guys planning to address that? Because it's going to happen. I can guarantee you, I grew up here, I see it all the time. I'm not against it because the kids need somewhere to go, but, you know, I mean, it's going to happen. What are you guys planning to do that to, I mean, if you go down to the shopping mall there on West Ridge, go there on Fridays and that's what's going on. You go to Safeway Parking Lot on Constitution and that's what's going on. So what are you guys' plans to address that? Because that's a big problem in our city.
Well, that's something that I think we're going to have to reconnoitre and figure out exactly how to deal with that in this community for that parking lot, for what you're talking about. I can tell you that in general, where we see it, and when I say we, I'm their lawyer, but I'm not Dave and Buster's, okay? So I'm sure they'll kick me if I'm telling you something that's wrong or we'll find out something to clarify it. But in general, the ABC does not allow any consumption of alcohol outside the licensed premises. The licensed premises is the footprint of the building, that's it. So they can't walk outside and drink, they can't drink in the parking lot, and that is by state law, the absolute responsibility of the alcohol licensee. So if part of what you're talking about is where, I mean, if they bring a keg or if they bring a six-pack, but if part of what you're talking about is people out there, whether they're minors or anybody else, and they're drinking, that's something that Dave and Buster's and its management and its security has an obligation to prevent. Now exactly how they're going to do that in the situation that's presented there, I'm sure they're going to have to talk about that and figure out what that, what that looks like.
All right, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the commissioners to the appellant or applicant? Commissioner Meeks?
Yes, first, I'd like to start by apologizing for being late to the commission and everything. Secondly, I'd like to say that I was born and raised before North Salinas was built. And thirdly, I have one question for your security. How do you handle unaccompanied youth after, say, 5:00 PM?
I'm sorry, how do we, how does Dave and Buster's handle unaccompanied minors after 5:00 PM?
Yes, after, say, about 5:00 PM.
It depends. And they're here and I can have them clarify if you like. My understanding, and if there's something to clarify, you want to do it? Okay, come on up.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think she was referencing the House policy that we have the whole 25-year-old thing. So our general standard is we don't allow anyone unattended in the building that's under 18 years old unless there was somebody that's 25 years old. That's the plan. And that's all hours of operation every day.
Ms. McQuaid?
Any questions, Commissioner Purnell?
Do, I have a few for the Dave and Buster's team. On the original CUP, it lists one armed car to carrying officer for a particular scope of time. So outside of that timeframe during the day, what does security staffing look like? Or is it non-existent?
It depends on what they're looking at in those time periods. In looking at what was needed to be required as part of the CUP for staff to be comfortable and hopefully the city be comfortable, and I think originally it came from law enforcement, these conditions, and for law enforcement to be comfortable, that's how we came up with one for sure, from 5:00 PM to, what is it, 5:00 PM to midnight, Monday through Thursday, I guess, and Friday and Saturday until 2:00 AM, and then between 12:00 and 2:00 AM, a second one. That's how we came up with that. Now, with that being said, it is something that gets reevaluated all the time. So when they start operating here in Salinas, what they'll do is they'll look to see in the first month or two, when's the busy time? Who's coming in? Is it a lot of minors? Is it a lot of families? Whatever that might be. If it turns out that on Friday nights, that happens to be the night that there's soccer practice and most of their patrons are families with kids and do all of that, probably not going to be very heavy in security because they just don't need to. If it turns out that, and I'll use another extreme, on Sunday night, if it turns out that that is a night when people come out and they've been, they've been watching football all day and they're coming out and they want to have a good time and all that, but it's mostly adults, then they're going to increase their security because that's what's necessary. But it depends on each community. I know that like in West Los Angeles, you don't see a lot of the soccer issue that I'm talking about, but down in Orange County and South Orange County, San Diego, you see that a lot. You see what that is. One of my law partners lives in South Orange County and she's got two kids and she's way active in all the sports and things, and that's what they do. And they happen to go, there's a, there's a Dave and Buster's, I want to say in Newport, I'm not sure, but that's where they go and that's the Friday night. So I don't really need security.
I appreciate the intentionality on staffing during busy hours, but I think my question more simplified, is there security at all times at Dave and Buster's?
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me for being not responsive. Let me just check. Typically, and again, it changes depending on what the needs are, typically you're looking at during the day, there's really not security, not specific security. All of the management, the servers, all of these people are trained to be able to provide some aspect of that. But in terms of security during the day, not typically. Generally, about 5:00 on, there's security of various levels. I can also tell you that I know that one of the issues that we see is, for instance, during football season, let's say, Super Bowl, and you've got people coming in at 10:00 in the morning, or if you're watching soccer, Premier League soccer, and they turn it on early and there's going to be people that are adults and they're going to come in, there's security to make sure that it's safe.
And then if there's not security, you mentioned there's a surveillance system, is that monitored the entire time?
Yes.
During hours of operation?
Yes, yes. And there's a, I think we're required here to have a 30-day time, 30-day term, I believe? 30 days.
And then looking at the blueprints, the arcade space is fairly large, but it looks like there's about 250 seats. Is that devoted to alcohol service because it's located in the bar area? And is that staffed with additional folks? I was looking at the square footage of the blueprint.
250 seats for where the restaurant bar area is?
So I guess my concern is if you've got young folks in the mix, what is the process of making sure, is it surveillance? Is it staffing? Young people are very creative in how they get access to things, so I want to make sure that there's no underage drinking on site.
It's, the surveillance system that Dave and Buster's uses is very robust. And I can tell you, again, just from personal experience, is whenever there's an issue and we want to take a look at it, any particular place, and I would expect this location, which has not been built out yet, to be the same, any particular view that I, as a lawyer, want to look at to say, okay, let's see what's going on there, we have different views of the same thing. So if there is a concern that there was a minor, or there's a concern that there's somebody that came in that was causing a problem or something, you want to be able to see all around, and they do that. And I know that they also have started, and I don't know how far along they've gotten, replacing... replacing the older surveillance cameras with higher definition cameras to be able to have a sharper image to do that. Is that, yeah? Okay.
And then you had mentioned between 11 million and 14 in projected revenue. As an organization, is there a lot of percentage you devote to philanthropy locally?
Is there, if I may, I want to make sure I heard it correctly. Is your question, is there a percentage that's devoted to philanthropy?
Like local organizations?
Let me answer, and then I'll ask a more specific question of my clients. I know that they're very active in the community, and they do make sure that they are active, and that obviously takes money, but let me find out if there's.
My name is Les Lainer. Wow, that's loud, isn't it? I apologize, I have a big voice anyway. My name is Les Lainer. I'm the company's Senior Vice President, Chief Development Officer, and Chief Procurement Officer. So I oversee the development of the company in every state in the Union, as well as assist with the approval of sites internationally, and also am responsible for the development of the company in Canada. I'm also in charge of all our procurement, all our contracts, et cetera. So from a philanthropic standpoint, the company gives in a lot of ways. One of the biggest things that we do from a special events standpoint is help people do fundraising events. We do not have a dedicated, we in the past have had dedicated charity partners, but we don't have one regularly that we do. And typically, what we do is encourage our local sales and event staff to find charitable organizations within the community in which they operate. It's more often, and I'll go back if you don't mind, and address this, I'm hearing a lot of security questions, and if, there's just, I'll put some broader parameters on this if you don't mind as well. One of the themes that I heard when I got here, and by the way, I want to apologize that you have such a bad concept of what we do, and definitely would offer to speak with you afterwards, it is, we would not be able to develop at the level in which we develop if people thought about us that way. And it's my job to ensure that they don't. And if we operated in a manner that was harmful to communities, we wouldn't have hundreds and hundreds of communities begging us to open locations in their community. And one of the big themes that I've heard tonight is, what are we going to do outside the center? And it's really critical that we note that this is a true lease, which means we're being leased a premise that does not include the outside of the center. And one of the real critical points that the director pointed out is that the troubles that we're having between the Sears building currently and between the security of what's happening at the Sears building now and what's happening with the mall now, adding Dave and Buster's to that doesn't change that in any way, shape, or form, nor can we be held responsible, or I believe that we should, for a current security problem that's existing because there's a bad relationship between the two developers. It's not uncommon today, when you have anchors that sell themselves, that you have a relationship of a mall owner and a different relationship of an anchor. And a lot of times, those anchors, when these malls were developed, had exceptions to what they have versus the traditional triple net expense and ability to help contribute normally to what would be the security of the mall. And so we are willing, as a tenant, to do whatever it is necessary, within reason, to operate our business in a great community that is Salinas, California. We would not have picked this if we didn't think it was a great family community. But the biggest thing that we do is make memories, and we provide a place for those memories to be made, whether that's you and your family, whether it's you and your coworkers, whether it's you and your daughters and their softball team, whatever that may be. And we have no desire whatsoever to have any of the issues that are being discussed today, and if we did, we wouldn't be very good at what we do, and we are. But philanthropically, all the things I just named, giving to youth softball, giving to soccer teams locally, sponsoring other youth organizations is a big part of what we do, but it's handled primarily locally by ourselves at a distance. And I hope you guys don't mind me just stepping back for a minute while I'm up here. And thank you.
One more question, I promise. And then it's about your hiring practices, and so we heard the word local. Obviously, this is home, and we love our community, want people here to get those jobs. Is there a local preference for hiring your staff?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I had several questions, but they all got answered. So we will now move on to comments from the public regarding this item. Seeing none, can we check on Zoom? Is there any raised hands?
Do you have an attendee but no raised hands?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
No raised hands.
Okay, thank you. We'll now close the public hearing on this item. Are there any additional questions or comments from the commissioners to Mr. Wiles or other members of city staff? Commissioner Rakamora?
I just want to say thank you to the director for your concerns, listening to what you have to say. Thank you to Dave and Buster's. North Salinas has been long waiting for something in North Salinas because there's really nothing to do in North Salinas, and I, I hope if it does go through that the director, you do grasp that and make that, if it does go through, work together. North Salinas doesn't really have nothing. We always have to go to South Salinas for the elders, for the older people. This is a great addition because, like I said, I've been to a Dave and Buster's, and it's a place, a good place to go eat, and I have grandchildren, a place for them to eat, I mean, play. But thank you for your concern. Thank you for, you know, considering Salinas. Salinas needs a big anchor store, and I've been pushing this for many years. That's what's going to bring in better stores to North Ridge, okay? North Ridge has changed, but I think it's going to be a step forward for the city of Salinas, seeing a big franchise, well, not franchise, big, you know, I guess, a big name brand eatery to Salinas and an event center. Other people will follow, and I hope North Ridge thrives and gets better. We're building a lot of restaurants, but we don't have entertainment. The only thing in North Salinas is the mall, I mean, is the theater, but this is going to be great. But thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Commissioner Ruck?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I do have some comments. I'm glad you're here. Thank you. I'm glad the appellant is here. Thank you. It's nice to hear all of this and sort of get a better feel. I want this here. I do. I want security. I do. I understand security's within the building. Your security's not outside the building. That was not really understood on me. So yeah, I agree with you with regard to security, and I do want this here. We just want to make sure that our neighborhoods and everything are secure. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Commissioner Gutierrez?
Just a comment, a couple of comments. One to the director, thank you for your passion in, on this, for caring about our community and the safety of our community, because that's the biggest thing here. Understand where you're coming from, and also thank you to the applicant for, or considering bringing, you know, something new that could be very beneficial to Salinas. I just think that we, as you guys noticed and heard from all of our, maybe most of our concerns regarding security is because we do live here, because we see what happens here. And regardless of what the statistics say on other cities, we know what happens in our own. So I think being mindful of security and, you know, doing the best that you guys can to keep that, I mean, it would be a great addition to the city, provided that is a safe environment, you know, inside and outside. And I really wish that if this goes through, that maybe, you know, the two sides can coexist and, and just for the benefit of the city. That's it. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Commissioner Meeks?
Mr. Wiles, I believe there may be an error in your cup. Item 4D, it says, it states daily at 2:00 a.m. Should it not be reinstated? It says Friday and Saturday only.
That was actually done as kind of a blanket.
Okay.
For the, it's covered for everything.
Difficult. Thank you, though.
Commissioner Purnell?
I think just to echo my fellow commissioners, this is home. We want what's best for our young people. I think anecdotally, as an employee of the school district, we have multiple security officers on school sites for a reason, and so it is a commitment as a school district, as a community, that we protect everyone around us. So I don't think that the CUP is sufficient in terms of security provisions, but I do think that this is an asset for the community. So we are beautifully imperfect, right? We have isolated incidents of violence and things along those lines, but to limit access to something that I do think could be a benefit to the community is, I think, the moral juxtaposition some of us are in right now, but I appreciate both sides of everyone being here. North Ridge Mall has been one of the few spaces families feel safe going to, and the playground's one of my least favorite places to be, but the best place for every young person to be, right? So I think there's a potential to have an additional beautiful space here, so I do hope that both developers have the opportunity to find a middle ground, because I think that both offer tremendous things to the city and the tax revenue and the safety and family value it brings is priceless for both of us. Thank you.
And I don't have any questions, but I would like to echo, and I really appreciate the appellant coming forward because this is creating a discussion and, you know, hopefully grounds for that. We do want to grow in Salinas. We want to continue to move forward. There are a lot of memories for those of us that grew up here in this town, and we are very protective, and we just want to make sure that our community is safe. Creating these things is a trust factor, so as things become a need, you know, I hope that everybody will step up and work together on the needs that we have for our community and a place that families can go. We're, you know, going to be bringing in more and more events that bring in outside, you know, people visiting our town, and last thing we need are headlines, you know? So I think that's just a major concern for us and, you know, very important for our city. So I appreciate everyone and your time and comments. Would any commissioners like to make a motion?
Do we approve conditional use permit 2024-024?
Do we have a second?
Any second?
If I may, I need to clarify the motion. So Commissioner Meeks, I would refer you to the recommended motion that's in your staff report. It's actually a little bit more complex than what you've stated.
Can we read the whole thing?
Please.
Okay, I can do that. Let me find it again. Okay, it's right, right, right here. It says, "I move to be approved conditional use permit 2024-024. Appeal of the city planner's approval to establish and operate a 23,412 square foot commercial recreation and entertainment use Dave and Buster's, with on-sale alcohol type 47, ABC license, located at 1104 North Main, North Ridge Mall, in a commercial retail CR zone district."
I think what you mean to say, Commissioner Meeks, is that you're making a motion to approve a resolution finding that this project is exempt pursuant to Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines and affirming the findings to deny the appeal of the city planner's approval of conditional use permit 2024-024.
That's exactly what I said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you.
With a motion from Commissioner Meeks and a second from Commissioner Ruck, we will have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Rakamora?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruck?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Meeks?
Yes.
Commissioner Purnell?
Yes.
Chairperson McKelvey-Dae?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So it is regarding conditional use permit 2024-024, conditional use permit 2024-024. Appeal of city planner's approval to establish and operate a 23,412 square foot commercial recreation and entertainment use Dave and Buster's with on-sale alcohol sales located at 1104 North Ridge Mall in the commercial retail CR zoning district. The planning commission has just rejected the appeal, upholding the city planner's decision for approval of conditional use permit 2024-024. Any person having standing to do so under the law who is agreed by this action or decision may file an appeal within 10 days of the city clerk's office located at 200 Lincoln Avenue. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, other business. Does it, do we have any other business? Nobody? General Plan Steering Committee update?
No update at this time. We're working on finalizing the public review draft, which we anticipate coming out in September.
Okay, thank you. Any follow-up reports?
No follow-up reports at this time.
Is there anything from the commissioners you would ask, that you want to ask a follow-up report on? Okay. Any future agenda items?
Not exactly. However, nothing is scheduled right now, but it is the intention of staff to not cancel the next meeting, but rather to provide some sort of study session, study session in a topic that is yet to be completely determined at this time.
Okay, so the next regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for September 17, 2025. Who will be able to attend this meeting? Raise your hand.
I'm going to be out of town, so I won't be here.
17th?
I'd like to state that on the 9th, I should be fine for the date of that, but I'm going to have a port put in because I have lymphatic cancer, which is not serious. It's already going into remission. I will be here if I have a pulse.
And we appreciate you being here today. I wanted to announce in the beginning of the meeting, welcome back, and that I believe in your 10-plus years of serving, you have like a 99% attendance rate. So thank you so much for your service, and thank you for being here.
And one late.
One lateness, yes. Okay, with that, meeting is adjourned.